I'm running for the Community Preservation Act Commission. I have asked them to come and introduce themselves and say why they are running for it. I think it's very valuable when you're running for a position that you are asked to be at these forms, so our residents in the city of Northampton know who is running and why. So I am giving up a good portion of my speech because I felt of the importance of these four candidates to be here this evening. I want to go ahead and have Jim Durfik go ahead and present himself, and then he needs to get to the CPC meetings. So Jim, go ahead.
Good evening, Ward Six. It's great to see so many friendly faces out there as well as fellow soccer coaches. A brief background on myself, I'm a Florence resident, married to a beautiful Northampton girl for 24 years, and two beautiful children. My educational background includes both a BA from UMass where I met my pride and MBA from Boston College with a specialization in fighting. My professional background includes the US Navy as a naval flight officer, and I am a combat decorated veteran of the Persian Gulf War. Following the Navy, I worked primarily as a business consultant. Zero second. And I currently retired due to my battle with ALS. I appreciate your support. Thank you. A minute goes by real fast.
My name is Mary Gottlieb. I live in Ward Two. I'm just going to jump right into my position on the Community Preservation Act. I believe in the Community Preservation Act and what it's done and still can do for Northampton, and I say, let's try to make it work for more people. It's not perfect, and it can be improved, and I'll work to do that. And for starters, I suggest, and I've already suggested to the chair, that every other meeting of the CPC be in Florence to encourage more participation from people in Wards Five, Six, and Seven. The state CPA trust fund, where the match money comes from, belongs to us. If we don't keep the CPA, we won't have access to that money that the Northampton residents have paid into. It will simply be divided among the communities that do have the CPA. There's less and less money available now to maintain our city. I think we all know about the economy. We need money to restore our historical buildings that are in need of expensive repairs, to buy farmland, to keep it in agriculture, and to create more affordable housing so that people of all income levels can continue to live here. And the CPA can help us do that, but it can't do it on its own. But I'd like to hear from all of you what kind of projects you would like. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marlene Moore. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilor Levarge for putting this together. I approached some other wards and they really weren't interested, but thank you, Councilor Levarge. My name is Marlene Moore. I live on Florence Road here in Ward Six. I work in downtown Northampton. I'm an attorney. I've had my own practice there since 1995. When I decided to become a candidate for this position, I started to ask people what they thought about the petition to repeal the act. I wanted to hear from those people. I think a lot of the problem is that people don't understand the CPA. The important thing is to vote, even if you vote to repeal the CPA act in this town, do vote for two of us, because it's built into the act itself, to the statute, that two people from the community will represent your interests. The rest of the people on the committee are appointed by the city council, by the mayor, by different commissions. So I'd ask that you be sure and vote for two of us, and we will work, this is my vote candidate stated, we will work to try to bridge that gap and keep everyone happy if CPA is not repealed in this community. So thank you for your time.
I'm Dave Rossing. Thank you, Councilor Levarge, and everyone for showing interest in the community. It's one that I care very much about, which is why I'm running for the CPC, which I find to be incredibly important tool in not only preserving, but bolstering some of the key features that make Northampton and our community so desirable and also strive to make it livable for everybody. But in order to do that, the CPC really needs to be focused and it needs to be well managed. To me, that means spending sensibly, funding projects fairly, approaching things in a balanced way. But I bring to the table, I'm also a lawyer. I've worked in environmental law in the past 15 years, as a wildlife biologist before that, in conservation, historic preservation, and affordable housing and mainstay at my work. But as a lawyer, I think we all bring to the table the ability to tease out some of the critical facts and make reasoned decisions that are defensible. So I'd love to be your advocate, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I want to thank all four of you for attending this forum this evening, and you're welcome to stay and watch the rest of the forum. And Jim, you can go to CPC.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to introduce the moderators for this evening. Patty Healy, who will be the moderator for the councilors at large. This is her first time doing a candidate's forum, and I want to introduce also Michael Horroyd, who also is the moderator for the mayor's candidate race. So if you both would like to come up, you're welcome to come up here, and you can explain what you're going to do. I'm going to ask all the candidates for councilors at large to come up to the table, please. Good evening, everyone. My name's Patty Healy, and I live in Ward Six. And yes, this is my first time moderating a forum, and Michael Horroyd is my great trainer. He keeps calling me Patty with a D, because I'm Irish, American. Anyway, this forum is designed to provide all of our residents with an opportunity to ask questions of our candidates directly. The microphone is to your left. I would ask people to come up to the microphone, one at a time. People stand out of the way of the camera until they come to the microphone. Those who wrote questions for me before you came in, those questions will be asked at the end of those who come up and speak at the microphone. So if you have them with me, if you'd like to take your question back and speak at the microphone first, you can do that. Each audience member who comes to the microphone is to state the name and address, there's a name and address, and pose a question to the group. It's a generic question, not directed to an individual, but to all of our councilors. They each have an opportunity to answer the question, starting with Jessie Adams, followed by Mary John Adams-Pollen, Bill Dwight, and then Michael Janik. And the second question will start with MJ, in that order, just so you know. Each candidate has a one-minute rebuttal, as their choice, after the other three candidates have answered the question. I ask that our residents be polite and respectful, as is the spirit of Northampton. Avoid making personal statements and comments. The moderator deserves the right to remind the speaker to avoid debate and to ask that question, the intended question. If we use our time wisely, we can cover a lot of ground. And candidates will begin with their opening introduction, which is a statement of one minute, if you know. I told you, you'll rotate the order. You may speak up to two minutes. Should you wish to respond or rebut, we will give you the opportunity to do so. We have our timer here, we will have signs. I think you've had that in your last read as well. This is a goof in the breath, you know.
That means stop.
Right, it's a great demonstration. At 7:22, each candidate will be encouraged to make a closing statement for up to two minutes. So the moderator will now recognize the first person who'd like to come to the mic, who'd like to come up and ask a question.
Yeah, we're doing.
Oh! I can tell, I'm nervous. We will stop. Yes, Jessie Adams.
My name is Jessie Adams. I'm the incumbent in this race. I've held public office for four years as a Forbes Library Trustee. Two years ago, you elected me as your at-large city councillor. And when I was running, I made certain promises to you, and I delivered on these promises by supporting the arts and culture with fresh ideas like Jazz Fest, working towards better government through transparency in reform, carefully scrutinizing our budget to ensure that our spending matches our values and priorities, fighting to maintain quality public education, advocating for the environment, sustainable living, and public health, listening to all points of view, and encouraging spirited and respectful debates. And I love doing these things as your advocate. I deliver, I improve it. For all these reasons, I'd like to continue serving you in a job that I love as your at-large city councillor.
My name is MJ Adams-Pollen. Some of you might know me by MJ Adams. Other people might know me by Mary John Poland. Other people might know me by Mary John Adams. I grew up in Northampton. I'm a product of this very fine school. I actually attended the school the day it opened. But I stand before you as one of two people who you might cast a vote for on November 8th as you elect two city councillors at large, and I ask that you give me due consideration. I think that the things, the issues that are at hand here in this new administration that we're going to have, we're going to have a new mayor come January, we're going to have a newly-elected mayor, and we have many issues on the plate in front of us. And I'll share with you that I bring with me to the table a wealth of understanding of the background of what Northampton has been, but also great ideas about what Northampton can be. I look forward to really serving as a respectful city councillor who can listen to the people of Northampton, include your affirmation as we make our important decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Bill Dwight. First of all, I'd like to thank Marion Levarge, and I'd like to thank all the sponsoring agencies for this opportunity to speak to you. I served as city councillor for eight years in the city of Northampton. I won every contested race I had, and after eight years, I fought. I had my fill of city government, and maybe some people out there filled me, I don't know. But the fact is that once I left city government, I found out they did not leave me. I went into radio, local radio, talking about local issues, all the same issues that I was embroiled in while I was serving as a councillor. I now, actually referring to what MJ just talked about, was that there is, Northampton's in transition. It's also at the precipice of some challenging times due to the global economic situation. I want to bring my dedication, devotion to serving once again the people of the city of Northampton, because I found out while I was councillor, it was the thing that meant the most to me.
Hi, my name's Michael Janik, and I run for city councillor at large. I'd like to thank the Ward Six Association, Water Net Waste, and Ward Six councillor Marion Levarge for putting down this debate and allowing me to be part of it. I believe, just like opera singer Jenny Lind proclaimed in 1851, "Northampton is the paradise of America." I'm not a politician, but like you, a proud citizen who, when elected, will bring a common-sense approach to solving our city's problems. Given the current tough economic times and the decrease in state federal monies, Northampton will need to have a long-term attitude about priorities instead of a short-term list for economic responsibilities. I believe that the city must do things differently financially and not be afraid to look for answers within itself. I've been an active candidate who hasn't been afraid to challenge the current governments of the city, but have shown that I will be willing to work for residents and taxpayers in Northampton. I believe that the transparency residents are looking for can no longer be kept behind doors. Our city is a diverse one, and with diversity comes many points of views, who, if allowed, can always strengthen the democratic process. Thank you.
So we can begin questions. Would someone please come up to the mic, state your name and address? You don't have to touch the mic, it's...
Oh, I don't touch. You observe me here, not touching the mic. My name is Peter Jones. I live at 105 Briarwood Drive, and I think we're very fortunate in Northampton to have so many qualified candidates willing to serve in our public offices, no matter who wins the city camp dues. My question is this: There's going to be a charter revision shortly, and one of the items on it will be who is going to run the city council meetings. I would like to hear the opinion of each of you concerning whether it ought to be either the, whether it ought to be the mayor or the council president who runs city council meetings, and why.
Good question. We have a charter that was written in the late 19th century. It's very antiquated. I was the vice-chair of the Charter Review Committee, and beginning back two years ago, when I was running for councillor at large the first time, I spoke of the need for a greater separation of powers within our government. A greater separation of powers would lead to greater balance in government, more fairness, and more transparency. Again, I was the vice-chair of that committee, and one of our recommendations was to not have the mayor chair the city council any longer. We are one of two cities in the Commonwealth that has that form of government. It's antiquated, and I support having the council president chair the city council, because again, that allows for a better balance of power. Throughout the years, we've seen a trend where the executive branch has gained a tremendous amount of power, and I think that we need a better balance. And the reason why is because that'll lead to a more fair, democratic, balanced government.
Thank you, Jessie. You know, Mr. Johnson, I actually don't have an opinion on that yet. I must be honest that I work in a nonprofit environment, and I work with a board of directors, and I'm the executive director. And I think there's a very interesting balance between my board president running the meeting and my opportunity to be there at the meeting and be the manager of the day-to-day operations. And so I actually don't have a good answer for you at the moment, but that's one of the things that I think the Charter Committee is examining and taking a look at what the balance, what the proper balance of power is. So I guess my answer is, I don't know yet, but I would hope to learn on the job, and I think that that's something that we would work through. And I do know that there's some value in having, in a municipal setting, a very clear spokesperson for the city, because I know as I travel around the community, around the region, and people say, "You are so lucky to be from the city of Northampton, and you're so lucky to have the mayor that you've had," that Claire has been a very clear and outspoken leader in the community. So I guess my answer is, I don't know yet, but I will learn very quickly what that might look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Peter, thank you. Actually, great question. Thank you for the compliment, in fact, actually, that you opened with it. When I served in the council before, there was an associated set of problems with any configuration, as you can imagine. One thing, one of the advantages of having the mayor presiding, the mayor is the only non-voting member, and as such theoretically doesn't necessarily have this, cannot actually lobby for a point and has to preside over and manage the tenor of the debate, and theoretically loosely following Robert's Rules of Orders and Northampton's own unique version of that. But at the same time, there's something to be said to have the council president preside. Of course, that confers more power on the council president, and I think as the Charter Committee reviews it and deliberates, that they have to figure out what that means, what the possible outcomes of that would be. I think it frees up for the council, gives them the opportunity to have more say in by and large, but also it confers upon greater responsibility, which I think cannot be a bad thing, it can only be a good thing. We do have a strong mayor with council construct, which is actually common in this state, and as such, though, within those restrictions and those parameters, I think we really could benefit from that as well.
Thank you. Thank you for the question again, and this is something that all of us citizens are looking at, is how are we going to move forward in the future here with our council and mayor? I believe that the council president should be the one that runs the meeting. Looking at where the federal government is set up, I think it's a check and balance, with the mayor being such a strong person and sitting in the seat. I think the council president and the council, having the power, where the buck stops, I think can only help for us to have the council president run the meeting. And said that, it is pretty much up to the Charter and the input from the citizens, but what they would like to see, and I would really like to see the citizens put forth their ideas on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to respond again?
I don't know. No, I'm continuing about the round question.
Okay, okay, next question. Please come to the microphone, state your name.
My name's Adam Rowan. I live on North Street. I invite each candidate to speak through their abilities and try to figure in terms of being a unifying force in the city of Northampton.
Thanks. I'm sorry, meant that. Thank you for that question. The question is whether or not, or what have we done personally to be a unifying force in the community? I'll speak from my experience, most recently in the work that I've done as I sit on the Board of Public Works. I have worked as the co-chair of the Solid Base Action Committee, and one of the things that we really worked at was first, trying to generate better understanding about what is recyclable and what is not in Northampton, and then to move on beyond that and to develop a plan and implement that plan to what can we do with the things that we think should be recyclable but aren't at the moment. And I think the end goal of that was a group working together with the support of Karen Berquillian from the DPW staff, to really look at those things that end up sort of marginally in the waste stream, that shouldn't be in the waste stream, and try to find a way to reuse them. We had that very successful reuse fair a couple of weeks ago at the Smith Correctional High School, where we took rigid plastics as sort of the core of what we were trying to recycle. Really moved beyond that and said, people brought things in, the things that we were sort of sensing were functional and could be reused, we pulled out of the waste stream, set out on a lawn, people came along, shopped, took some with home with them, but we really worked together as a team to really divert a whole bunch of stuff that would have ended up in a landfill, out of the landfill, and instead used very functionally in somebody else's own backyard.
Your camera okay?
Oh, it's great.
It just bounced on the floor. When I served as a city councillor, one of the things that, there was a lot of local divisions around issues relative to youth, and part of my concern was that we had a lot of us deciding what would be best for the youth without actually soliciting the youth's opinions and thoughts. So established, I worked with the mayor's office and established a youth council, a youth council that would actually deliberate city issues that were relevant to remain to them, and that they would actually vote and make recommendations as well, in the same way that any subcommittee of the city works. Then actually negotiating with residents of Hampshire Heights, Hampton Gardens, trying to maintain affordability in these regions and also maintain quality lots and quality circumstances. And then when I went into radio, it was to invite all sides at the issues, and not just two sides, there's rarely two sides having an issue, but to have all sides represented and speaking to issues that were germane and relevant to the people, and it meant a lot to the people here in the community. It's what I do well, and it's what I'm most proud of. And I think that, you know, I don't buck hay very well, I drive okay, but for the most part, the thing that I'm most proud of is the way I conduct myself in that.
Thank you. I'm a uniter. My education in the field of counselling, I'm a good listener. I've already met with the farmers down in Ward Three, we already know that's a high contested area. I'm looking to work with some of the people that have lived around the Three County Fair. I've met with the residents of Cahill with Sallow House. I've met walking the wards of the city. I've been a good listener. So I'm already working on the issues. I've worked on a couple of issues with David Narkwitz already to get a light turned on at Cahill that was been out for the last six months. So I'm a uniter. I'm willing to work with anybody, whoever the mayor shall be, I will be there backing them, when they need me back. We're not afraid to ask a question and find out a different answer if it need be. So if you look at the breadth of my experience, it's been service-oriented. I worked at Big Y, and I had people under me. I had to be a uniter in this position. So if you look at my field experience, you'll see that I'm a uniter. Thank you.
We have 14 precincts in this city, but we are one city. I believe in unity. Two years ago when I was running, I emphasized unity repeatedly, and I still do. In this first term, I have encouraged spirited and respectful debates. I'm in this job, and I know how to do this job, and one of the things I've learned in my first term is how to be a unifier. People, I'm an accessible guy. I make my way throughout the city all the time. I live and work downtown. When I step outside of my house, I have people criticizing me, and that's fine. People say, "You can do this, you can do that," and I say, "Look, I, the point is, I engage people with different points of view all the time. I have no choice, but if I would, I still wouldn't hide from them." I'm a unifier, I have been. I've represented this entire city. I love the whole city, and if you give me the opportunity, I'll continue to do just that.
Now, I just want to echo and appreciate the work that Built It with the Youth Commission, whom my oldest daughter sat on the Youth Commission, and one of the most valuable council committees I've had as a teenager. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I could only ruin it by this.
I echo what everybody says, is that we have uniters on council. It's a must for everything that's in the city. It's a must.
Hi, my name is Bill Share. A lot talk nationally about how we create jobs. In Northampton, recently, we have invested in a new police station. We invested in bike paths, invested roundabout. Are these good examples of how we in Northampton can do something about the national problem and create jobs at home?
And I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, actually, there are times when we have these discussions as a disconnect about the value of infrastructure versus the value of anything else. Infrastructure is not quite as alluring until it stops functioning. When the potholes, when the streets collapse, when the roundabout, when there's traffic congestion, or people are, people's lives are affected by this disintegration of what we call our infrastructure. It's, we basically have benefited... And I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, actually, there are times when we have these discussions as a disconnect about the value of infrastructure versus the value of anything else. Infrastructure is not quite as alluring until it stops functioning. When the potholes, when the streets collapse, when the roundabout, when there's traffic congestion, or people are, people's lives are affected by this disintegration of what we call our infrastructure. We basically have benefited enormously from the investment by people who precede us. We will pass on the burden to people who come after us if we defer maintenance and investment in systems that benefit the city in every way and every manifestation. It would not make sense for us to, regardless of the challenges, to pass up an opportunity to maintain our superstructure and our infrastructure. Otherwise, we'd be sitting there, we'd be ten years from now, twenty years from now, yelling about us, we, who didn't carry our share.
I'd just like to echo what you said, but I think the important aspect from the federal government is funds. It's getting the funds here. It's lobbying our congressman, trillions of dollars in debt, I'm not sure that much more money could come this way. We've done a lot with the federal money that we had, the roundabout, as Mr. Shear pointed out. We need to do better, we need to lobby stronger, and I believe if, as citizens, if we get out there with our council and do letter writing, and really put them where the votes count, that they will hear our voices, this is the way we're going to get more dollars invested in the community. We already have transport, modalities coming this way, we need more funding to come this way. Thank you.
I heard two things in Mr. Shear's question, I'd like to respond to both. Firstly, I'd like to respond to bike paths and roundabouts, both are important. I believe in Northampton that is livable, walkable, and bikeable. This first term, I was vice chair of Parking Transportation, and that's related to the transportation side, and I was chair of the Board of Public Works and City Council Conference Committee, and that's related to the infrastructure side. And I do believe that safe and useful infrastructure will lead to a better Northampton, and that safe and useful infrastructure will also help job growth in Northampton. With respect to jobs, we need more jobs in Northampton, and we can do better. And I see certain specific areas where we can do better. One is on King Street. There are a set of zoning revisions aimed at King Street, and the hope is that with those revisions, we'll be able to attract more businesses in, more businesses that are consistent with Northampton, the character of Northampton, and with that, more jobs. Another place is the fairgrounds. As that development grows over the coming years, that'll be a place for economic growth and will hopefully bring jobs to the city. Another one is the Roundhill, part of Northampton right behind Plassey Park. As that grows, there'll be more jobs there too. But again, in my experience, I think that we do need more jobs. If we're elected, I'll continue to work towards that goal.
Thank you. I think that's a very important question about what can we do to create jobs here in the Northampton area. We know that we are in an economy that is pretty lame, or hasn't lived along in terms of job creation, although it's good to know that Massachusetts has done better than the country as a whole. And the reality is, is that at federal level, as they look to invest, hopefully, more money into infrastructure, I think that there will be money well spent, because I think not just here in Northampton, but across the country, we've seen a real disinvestment in those things that have made us great, and that is our roads, our bridges, the safety of our infrastructure. And that money spent in the local infrastructure, on streets, on roads, on drainage, on bridges, is money well spent because it has a very strong multiplier effect in the local economy. Construction does a great deal to spin off other economic activity in the local regional economy. It's probably the best dollars we could spend in trying to come out of this recession, it's really to take care of that deferred maintenance that has happened in our infrastructure. And I can tell you, sitting as a member of the Board of Public Works, every week when we have a meeting, we hear about failed drainage, failed streets, sidewalks that seem unsafe to the folks whose houses they run in front of, and we know that we have not been able to invest in them locally. I'll tell you that one of the things I think that Northampton has been very effective in is, is that when the money becomes available, is we have been ready to take it because we have done the planning to have things shovel-ready. The Jackson Street School project, the road work that happened in the front there, happened because we were shovel-ready. And I think that good planning leads to the ability to take advantage of those, or the state resources and federal resources that become available.
And I'm sorry, just a quick follow-up relative to jobs. I mean, one of the principal assets that Northampton has is actually Northampton. It's, we are an appealing place to live, an enormously appealing place to live, and that, if we maintain that, our best face and our best systems, then we therefore appeal to job creators. No one's coming here to build a big factory, that's not likely. And, but we, there are a lot of people in fields of computer development and software development and other things that require telecommunities. If you provide a good place for their company to be and a good place for their employees to live, an appealing place, then you've sold them.
Coming off of Bill's comment, are we business friendly? I mean, we've taken over ten years to redo King Street, and is that something that we could have done earlier? I can't blame it on all the background, because it was more than ten years ago that the Hill and Dale was closed, and we were slowing and reacting as far as being open to attracting businesses. King Street is a prime example. I will work hard to make sure that if something's not right, to take a second look at it and adjust it to where it should be. That's how we're going to create jobs, is making it business-friendly and looking after the dollars from the federal government. Thank you.
Next question.
Hi, Steve Lucas from Turkeyville Road, the L. Horns. My question regards the upcoming ballot question we'll have on the CPA. My direct question is, how will you vote and why? And I'd like to remind you that a no vote will keep the CPA in place, a yes vote will reject the CPA. Thank you.
I put in motion, I talked to Mr. Mark Carney, who's a ward of six, resident, had a conversation with him about the CPA, I get some misinformation out there. Within a week, he had a meeting at the city council to clarify what the CPA does, what's good about the CPA. So I put that in motion. I believe it's done some real good projects, Bean Allen Farm is one of them, but the electronic reader board, from what I'm hearing from residents, was one that had no historic value at all. Talking with the wards, and the CPA is part of the citizens' democratic process they have talked about in my campaign, citizen input. As a council at large, I'm promoting the process of allowing views to be heard. What I find interesting is that there's been no conversation involving possibly reducing this to three percent, to maybe two percent, one and a half percent, allowing both sides to compromise. And I'm wondering why not? It's either up or down. So I'm wondering why we're not having this conversation to keep the CPA at a lower level, to make everybody happy. We should be looking for compromise, so both sides that are against it and ones that are for it will have some input, as is how we want to move along. If the CPA passes, I will work hard to make sure that the proper things are done, as your council at large, to make sure it's based on the needs of the city and is good for all residents. Thank you.
The CPA is averaged seventy-nine dollars on each person's tax bill, average. And that money has gone to some very, very important things that I think we all care about. Some of those things are restoration of Forbes Library, Lilly Library projects, Florence Fields, David Rublison, First Churches, the Academy of Music. I think it is an important conversation that we should have, as to whether or not our expenditures are consistent with our values and priorities. However, I support the CPA. For us to sit here and say that it's for the voters to decide, well certainly it is, and each person can weigh in on that, but that's also saying that it's okay for the CPA to fail, that I don't care. I do care. I want the CPA to succeed and continue to be successful in Northampton. It's done some wonderful things. So I'll answer the question. I want to keep the CPA in Northampton, and I hope that you love it too.
I want to tell you that I unequivocally support the continuance of the CPA, and I'll share with you that I see that, because I'm the executive director of Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity, and quite honestly, and in fairness of full disclosure, without the CPA funds, it would be very difficult to create homeownership opportunities for working-class people in Northampton without the CPA money available to us. I'll also share with you that as the treasurer for First Churches, the primary downtown focal point church, that without the resources that came to First Churches from the Community Preservation Act, we would still be struggling along, trying to restore a building that is an absolute critical piece of the downtown character. And for those critical reasons, and the fact that Northampton, I mean, when people think of Northampton, they think of our downtown area, and that is an incredibly important tourist and local resource that we have, and we need to invest in it to keep the resource there and to keep it manageable and safe, quite honestly. The CPA money is incredibly important. It's done wonderful, it's done wonderful things with the Bean Allen Farm. I look around and I think, what better articulation of our community values than to preserve and retain those working farms and to add in some new uses that are desperately needed by the community? The recreational fields that will come from that, the more community farms, and it's a critically important resource that we need to retain. On the same side, I will say that it's critically important that we spend our money well, and when people say, do pothole repair or do CPA, I want to make sure that we're getting as much resources into the infrastructure as we can, given our local revenue stream.
Thank you. May I turn to you for a moment, Bill? Excuse me. There are lots of chairs over here, there are a lot of people standing in the back. Please help yourself to a chair. There are certainly standing, so, okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to tell people they could take a little bit.
Hi, so this is you coming in, we're talking about the CPA. You have some really good ones. The Community Preservation Act actually is a miracle act as far as these things go. The beauty of it is, despite, I mean, you know, we've just talked about the virtues, about the fact that it leverages over twenty million dollars of outside investment in the community, twenty million dollars, there's nothing else you can do that would do that. But the fact is, is this is money that's collected here, states here, it's matched in varying degrees from the state, and then we get to disperse and distribute it based on the four items of criteria, historical preservation, affordable housing, recreational expansion, and open space. One, three things on lots. But the thing is, is that it's done that so well, so successfully, and the fact is that any one of us who takes issue, if it's the electronic board at the Academy of Music, we can go speak to an appointed, actually just met some of the candidates for the elected position, for elected and appointed members of our community, and make our case known. And then, they send their recommendation to the city council, and once again, there's two bites of the apple, to determine how these tax dollars are apportioned. There is no other tax system that we have in the city, no other revenue system and distribution system that has as much access, has much transparency, that does as much as it does for this community.
I agree with what everybody said, it's done tremendous good things, but in listening to the citizens again, it's citizens' input, they say it's about self-prelevation. Although seventy-nine dollars is a small amount, the upcoming taxes or fees of eighteen percent on water and sewer every year, most likely a two and a half property tax increase, and a possible trash fee between three and five hundred, seventy-nine dollars for some people in this economic times is really tough. And that's what they're talking about. I've been out in every ward, and they've told me this, they like the CPA, but they think we need to take a break. I'm listening to the citizens, I like what's been done and some of the stuff, some I don't. I support the CPA in theory, but listen to the citizens, again, it's a citizens' initiative, and that's what we're, I don't think that's being pushed upon. I still would like to talk about possibly moving to two or one percent, that way everybody gets a compromise and wins. So I would like to really talk about that.
If I made it that point, I believe the enabling legislation doesn't allow that. Oh, I'm sorry.
I already just thought to jump in.
Okay.
I just want to say that my experience has been mostly CPA money does go into construction, and if you want job creation, that's where you spend your money, is in construction and site development, and that's where my senses, I know that's where we spend all the money with the First Churches, is that that's really a very important thing. I do hear your concerns, I think the economy, when we passed the CPA money, the economy was feeling pretty good, and I do know that people are feeling strapped, so I certainly honor and appreciate and acknowledge what you've been hearing, that I think is very real, and that we have to think, we have to make sure that those dollars are well spent, and that the strap local, I mean, the local impact, I think, is incredibly important in the economy.
Sorry, jumped my turn, but actually, unfortunately, for better for worse, regardless of the proposal, I believe the enabling legislation doesn't allow you to reconfigure the attitude of the CPA as it stands, if it gets voted up or down, gets repealed, so a compromise like that because of enabling legislation is impossible to achieve. The other thing is that, there are protections for people at risk here, there's protections, the assessment doesn't occur until after the first one-hundred-thousand-dollar evaluation on any property. And then also, for people who are needing for the elderly, you're exempt, you don't have to pay. There's many protections built into this, that's another thing that makes this tax such as it is, a revenue stream for us, a miracle act.
Thank you. Next question, please take your name.
My name is Jasper, I live forty-two Butler Place, Ward Creek. So my question is, I know some touched on very briefly, but there are two enormous vacant lots on King Street, the old Honda dealership in the mall, they've been empty for a very long time. My question is two parts. First of all, what do you think the city can do to do something with those lots? And two, if you could do whatever you want with them, what would that be? Oh, and keep the CPA.
Is that a question?
That's a good question, Jasper. The fact of the matter is, those two lots have been vacant for a very long time, and I believe we do need to, as I stated earlier, fill those two vacancies, and hopefully build more jobs when those vacancies are filled. I think, Jasper, that, my hope is that if we rezonate King Street, to make it more business-friendly, yet still as green as possible, while making it business-friendly, that's the best opportunity that we have to fill those two vacancies. And in my experience, that's, you're correct, they need to be filled, and as I stated earlier, we need to better our jobs, and hopefully we can with those. What I'd like to see ideally, I think two big needs we have are mixed-use buildings, residential, I'm assuming commercial on the first floor and residential on the fourth. I'm not sure if that'll happen at either of those lots, but if we're going to be realistic, I'd like to see that, possibly an intermodal facility for the rail system that's coming in. That's being ideal, being practical, I would like to see some sort of business that fits with the character and nature of Northampton and creates jobs.
I'd like to echo what I just heard Jesse say, in terms of thinking about the future. We've talked about the rail extension coming up from the Springfield area, the high-speed rail extending from New Haven up to Springfield, and hopefully up into Northampton eventually. So I think the city has to keep a very close eye and be very much engaged in that conversation with the regional transportation people about what the possibilities are, because that King Street corridor has great potential. The rail is there, and we should be making sure that as that conversation advances, which I believe it will result in some sort of rail service, meter rail service up into Northampton at some point in my lifetime, that we need to be prepared to be able to accommodate that in the King Street area. The other thing is, is that we have sat there, I've seen those vacant lots, and they have been eyesores, and reminders to us that sometimes what's happening when it comes to roots in Northampton is what's happening in the regional economy, the national economy. We have people built the commercial space, and we are now facing less demand for that, and we do not want to build more of what is not needed. So I want to be mindful that we have economic development professionals who work for the city, we participate actively in the region's economic plan, and we should be mindful of what the region needs, and that remind itself that Northampton, I think, holds a very unique position as a very attractive community that will draw people to come work and want to live and work here, who want livable, walkable cities and jobs that they can attend to.
Hello, Jasper. I live a block from King Street, I'm quite intimate with King Street in that I was also involved in the two years of deliberation that created the zoning that's currently being modified, and also very familiar with the issues. And also very familiar with the issues. And the two empty lots, as everyone passes by and everyone looks up and goes, what is going on? And the thing is, is that what's going on is those lots are like individual personalities. They have their own individual challenges associated. They're not, it's the economy, the Price Shopper lot, for instance, the Price Shopper folks were paying rent on that property for decades after they even closed the store. There was no impetus to flip the property because it was collecting money without any other investment. There were about four developers, I think, that came and went for a variety of reasons. Some of them, they claimed were the zoning, some of them complained that they just couldn't get the systems that they wanted to go in there. The same thing, the Honda dealership lot, again, it's as much as trying to negotiate with the ownership and the proper developer to come in. The city has a kind of limited role in this. We don't build those properties, we don't own them, we don't control them, only to the extent that we actually create zoning that projects what the community's vision would be. You ask what I would do? If I were king of the world, I would love to see down around the whole Morgansite, a whole other neighborhood, a community neighborhood of stores and shops owned by locals.
All right, Jasper, thank you very much. I've already touched on this, as you said. I think it has to do with timing. It's, we watched this property sit there for so long and we didn't do anything about it. We didn't be, we weren't more acceptable to businesses to come in and make proposals. Those properties have sat for a long time, it's almost 15 years. And as Bill said, that it's an eyesore. And the transportation model, it possibly could come here a lot quicker than, it would be excellent. As far as that creating a bunch of jobs, the city has a limited hand in it. And to get the businesses to come is where the jobs are going to come. So we really need, King Street, we have some proposals to do changes, those need to move forward. And we need to look at other parts of the city that could be marketable too. It's not just King Street. We really need to be more accepting to businesses all around. That is where we're going to create the jobs. And the city has a pushy hand in it and is doing ordinances and looking at what we can do to make business more acceptable to come in. Thank you.
Just like to expand on that just a bit. The part of the problem right now is we have, we do have a blind sight that the city does, as I said, have a limited ability to make appeals. There has actually been part of negotiations, a lot of negotiations for the disposition of that property. The city actually has worked very hard to try and get something to work there. It's not from lack of outreach, it's from lack of investment. And that is, you're sitting, what you're looking at on King Street is the most expensive real estate in this part of state. It's very expensive. The reason is because it's such a prime location, it's such an appealing place for large-scale retail systems. And as such, we run into another problem now. We have a depressed economy with discretionary dollars not being spent. Developers are not coming in and building those stores now and they're not making pitches some.
Can we have more citizen input and look at what we can do that's different? Maybe we need to pare down and look at small type businesses, little micro businesses that were coming to the city. Our, is our picture too big? Should we change it? We're going to have to work with a mayor. The mayor's going to be the one that's the driver in this. So the counselors will have to work with whoever that mayor is. And let's try and really tweak and see what we can do that's different. We need to do things differently, not the same old thing.
Thank you. Next question. Somebody to enter the mic and ask a question. Turn to the mic and state your name.
Hi, I'm Donna Riley. I live on Prospect Street. And I have a question about a future infrastructure project, which is, when the landfill closes, I understand that there's a proposal to put a solar energy facility on the site. And I think that's a great idea. My concern about the idea, as it's been talked about so far, is that it requires a private investor to put up the capital and ultimately profit and sell the energy back to us. And my understanding of reading about municipalization of energy facilities in the state of Massachusetts, municipalities that own their own energy infrastructure can offer energy at rates that are somewhere between 15% to 30% lower than private rates. And so I'm wondering, I know that, you know, these economic times are hard, but is there a way to have this be a publicly funded project? I would just forward that.
Landfill and photovoltaics, my two favorite topics.
First of all, the reality is the regional landfill is going to close probably next year towards the tail end of the year. And the question is, what's the best, highest investment use for the community for that site? And I think photovoltaic arrays, solar arrays are a great opportunity. We know that the city or the town of Amherst has been working through that process. And from someone who actually builds houses that have photovoltaic arrays on them, I can tell you, it's a wonderful way to co-generate electricity at a very reasonable price. So I think it's a wonderful, sort of innovative thing that we can think about doing in the future. The question is, what's the role of cities in having that happen? And I'll share with you that I would say two things. First of all, I think that we've been a good manager of the landfill, but we don't know much about managing energy facilities. We have a waste to, what is it, the waste-to-energy plant that we have over there that we manage, it burns off the methane. And that's been challenging from time to time. I don't think that we are necessarily the best organization or the best entity to be doing that. But I will share with you that I think that the Council of Governments is really probably pretty innovative in terms of energy use. And I would certainly hope that we might tap our Council of Governments here in Hampshire County, because they do have some pretty specific knowledge about energy and have worked on creating those energy opportunities. So that's the first door I would knock on if we were to look forward. And I do think we need to be forward-looking about what are the new uses for that site.
Thank you, Donna. I think actually, the, well, you know, as you've seen in Amherst and you've seen these things, and these are being considered all over. It's a great reuse of the land and of course, the offsets would benefit us enormously. The issue about the municipal system, becoming a municipal energy system, there's actually a very good example of that just down the road in Hoyop, which generates its own water power. And there's the Hoyop Water Power Commission. Now, I'm from Hoyop, so is mine. And that comes with problems too, because then at that point, it becomes a political issue. And I don't, and it becomes, it'll be certainly be a political issue as we sit and try to negotiate an investment in that type of system here in the city. Really, people would have concerns about how much it would cost, what would be the benefit. I mean, I think the benefit's pretty obvious. If it's a city-run municipal power system, then it's ours exclusively. I remember the blackout in the 70s. I was very disappointed because Hoyop stayed bright and light. And we, it was in Delgado, 1965? And, but the fact is, and they also built the coal power plant, which as we know is one of the dirtiest in the country and has, it's not serving us well nearby who have to breathe the same air but don't enjoy the benefits of the power. But I actually like the idea. And I think that actually speaks to something that I think we need to do in the city, is look at exciting visionary things like that.
Thank you for your question. Solar energy, it's going to be the future. I'm all on board for it. I'm actually looking at some, for some arrays to be put on my house so the neighborhood heads can put on. I talked to a gentleman from Washington State. Smith College has done a study for us. I'm not sure where that is sitting right now, to see if it's feasible for us. I'm hoping that the city can do, get on board with that. It's all going to boil down to cost. That's the big, everything's going to be cost from here on in. With federal government, we've seen that they backed the company with solar arrays, and that went big up. So I'm not too sure where the money would come from it. But I would be on board and check it out and see where we could make an investment.
I voted to close the landfill. I agonized over that decision. And that was easily the toughest decision I made in my first term. To look people, tell them that you're going to close off a revenue stream in the toughest economy since the Great Depression, that's not easy to do. But I did it because I was voted to make the tough decisions. And the reason why is because I value public health and I value the environment. And we need to recycle, reuse, accomplish more and create disincentives, not incentives to create waste, disincentives. And the landfill created incentives. And with respect to your question specifically, my vision for the future regarding the landfill, part of it is to have a solar facility at the landfill. And what we can do is we can look to our neighbors who are already doing it, who have already done it, like Greif Field, and learn from what they're going through and learn from their mistakes and the things they've done right. And I will support that solar facility there and everything that, for the best maximum public use there. If we can, if we can make money for the city and offset our cost of energy through a solar facility over there, then that's what I'll support.
Sure. I'd like to just speak to the necessity for the investment, because I think that's what gets lost in this conversation. I think everyone likes the end result, the fact that we might end up with photovoltaic arrays that generate electricity. But there is a financial investment that needs to be made. The question is, how does the city make a decision about whether or not that's a wise thing for us to be engaging in as an entity? It's not in our mandate as a city to provide energy for the residents or the community. So how can we partner with other entities out there that might already have better understanding of the markets, better ability to take advantage of the financial incentives that might be out there for the private sector that are simply not available to the municipal sector? And that's why I think that we should be mindful as we wade into that discussion about partnering with other entities that might have a better understanding of that market, a better understanding of the risks, and the better ability to manage that type of process of investment.
I just add to that, as the states and federal government are aggregating their responsibility, there's less and less revenue coming from that side and placing a greater, harsher burden on municipalities, which are very, we're very limited now, we can generate money. And that's through property taxes, we all know, which has got to 2.5%. Fines and fees, and the fees have to go directly to the cost borne by whatever it is that's being done, that the fee pays for. And fines, there's not enough bad partners in North Hampton to subsidize most of the projects that we would like to do. But with that challenge, I mean, I think clearly, as the public has conversations, if there is an offset, when you're generating your own energy, you're not buying the energy. So there is a benefit, and if we could do it well and if the community has buy-in, I see that as to our advantage only.
I echo what he says, but I mean, I'm really happy that we live in a community that really cares about its environment and wants to do things differently. Costs, it's all going to boil down to cost.
Next question, please.
A question from Florence. At times, I felt like my only shot at being heard by city government is to go to the public comment session at the city council to voice my comments and concerns, mostly regarding a buffer behind my home and the lab of enforcement within the building office and the planning offices. And I'd like to say, I'm glad to report, I finally have a buffer behind my home today, just recently. I have two parts to this question. The first question, the first part is, how will you unite people like me who feel this way about the city government and not being heard? And the second part of that question is, how and what would you do to ensure that the city departments follow through on their decision-making?
Who's that? Is that me?
You're right.
Actually, Brett, I remember when you first came.
Eight years ago.
It was eight years ago. I was councillor. And I think the frustration that you're speaking of is that it's one of a number of reasons, and clearly ones that need to be corrected in large part. But they're also, what you're talking about, these accents, or some people use the term transparency. Or, in this case, you're not asking for transparency, you wanted, you wanted actual results and you wanted, you had a problem, you presented to council that you wanted to rectify. Now, to be honest, I don't know what the circumstances were beyond your original appeal, because I left the council right after that. Actually, to that extent, the side box on Jackson Street that MJ referred to, I asked for 12 years ago. They did show up this year. So I, so I mean, I think you're talking about a couple of things. One is the slow reaction of the city, which could be, which could be an aspect of, you know, process. But the most important thing, the critical thing in that I've discussed over and over again, is access to government or involvement in government. And unfortunately, the way it's set up right now, for the most part, we aren't aware of these things because they're in, a lot of these seem to deliberate in subcommittee meetings that unfortunately, right now, aren't televised or people don't have access to it. And there's not enough reporters to cover it. I'm on the board of NCTV and our ambition is to have every single subcommittee broadcast or online. And I have to stop now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question. We have something in place already, it's called best practices, that we should be really promoting. Our councillors should be highly accessible. I'd go for having a office hour to make sure that I'm accessible to you. I've gone throughout the city, I've met with the seniors, the Cahill Apartments, Ward Three, I've been at the Neighborhood Watch meeting. I'm making myself accessible. And that's what this position is for, to make yourself accessible for all citizens throughout the city. You should have three councillors working on your issues, not one, not one more councillor, but three. And those two other councillors besides the ward should be accessible to you and working on your problems. We should be pushing the best practices and I will make sure that all departments are accessible to the public. We should have more public meetings. The trash bag thing, it was horrendous. We should have had a public hearing on it. That is one thing that I would push for, is make sure that our government is accessible. We talked about this, the TV, that's one aspect. But having the meetings in the JFK or the high school at least twice a year, council meeting, or if it's a high-issue thing, we have those meetings so they're accessible to the residents. Thank you.
Brett, I value accessibility. My first term, I had a policy where anyone who emails me, calls me, Facebooks me, texts me, however, they're trying to get ahold of me specifically, my policy is to get back to them. Even if it means an hour conversation, I get yelled at the whole time that happens sometimes. But also, the point is that I get back to people, unless they're making a general comment with a particularly field doc or something, and I weigh that in my decision-making. But not only have I feel that I've been accessible, but I, as I stated before, that I was the vice-chair of the Charter Review Committee, which is part of best practices number 10. I fought for best practices in my first term. And frankly, it took a long time to get your policy, but I'm glad it got done. And we can do better. I'm sorry it took so long, government is slow moving. And with respect to your answer about how we make sure that departments follow up, it's by being persistent. I can't tell you how many times I've called the DPW director in my first term, asking for him to get certain things done. And he listens. And, but the thing is, there's a lot to do with limited resources, with limited means. So that's how I get them to follow up, and we can do better, and I'll try to do better for you.
I'm going to share with you that my sense is, is that the public comment piece in the city council meeting is more of frustration with people who have tried to reach out, be in touch with their city councillors, be in touch with the city staff, and have, are so frustrated that they end up at that meeting because they feel like they have no place else to go. I'll promise you that as your city councillor at large, that I will make sure that you will not end up there, if you may, I'll call to you. That I will work with you, help you identify people in the community, the municipal staff that you need to be working with, and help you get answers. It's not always going to be the answers that you're going to want to hear, but by the time you do get to the city council, you will be there because there is no actual response to your issue at hand. But I do want you to end up there only if I, as your city councillor, have worked with you to help you connect with the local, like I said, the municipal staff or the other people who need to be involved and help to identify what the problem is, who are the people who need to come around the table, serve as problem solvers, stakeholders who have some investment in seeing that issue resolved and work as positively as they tend to resolve it. That's what I can promise. And I do need to echo what Mike said, that you have three city councillors working for each of you, that your ward councillor and the two at large are there for you, and that you- for you, and that you should use them.
Just a point of information, all meetings are public meetings. They have to be if they involve city officials, particularly if there's a quorum of city officials. The problem is in, what I think the frustration that we're talking about is, when do, I don't go to every meeting to try and figure out what's gonna apply to me. So when do I find out things apply to me? And I think that's, that's the point that we have to massage. We have to figure out, and I don't have the answer. And I don't think anyone's to stabilize the answer right now. But the fact is, we have to clearly work out engagement from the community so that, I mean, because I don't think anyone's particularly avoided, any councillor's avoided anybody, or avoided any issue, or deliberately dragged on something. The fact is that there's a disconnect, and it's a communication disconnect. And we bear the responsibility because we're asking for the responsibility. We bear the responsibility of trying to bridge that and make it as accessible as possible, short of coming to your house every day and telling you what's going on, and having you get a restraining order against it every morning again.
Mike, you got it?
Yes. I just have to give an example. I'm not on the council. And the Cahill Apartments needed a light put on. I worked with David Narkwitz to get a light that had been off six months. And it was a safety issue. They said they contacted all their councillors that they could, and they came to me as a candidate. I worked hard. I worked with David and Mr. John Height, and got that light on in one week. So there is a disconnect. And you, as citizens, need to really look at, if you're okay with that. If you're not, then you need to change things.
Jesse.
That constituent never came to me. If they did, that light would have gone on quicker.
We have time for one more question. Does someone want to put a mic together? Please state your name.
Emma Jean Teasty. I represent Board Seven of the City Council. I'm also on the Finance Committee with Marion O'Marge. And our capital improvements set at about 1.6% for several years of the city's budget. And now we've hit up to 2.6% that we're at right now over the last four or so years. And but just that 1% equals about $90,000 on the rest of the budget. It's a lot of money. And it has to come from somewhere. And so my question is, what are your thoughts on what we're doing with capital improvements? And are we moving through this correctly? And do you have any ideas? I have a lot of ideas, but you'll probably throw me off the finance for the next term. But anyway, what are your thoughts about the way we go about capital improvements? And is there something that you would do that would be different?
In looking at what you're talking about, is where are we gonna find the money for these capital improvements, as they move each year to year? We have to find somewhere in the budget. On the Finance Committee, I would have to really look at the issue and really find out where the money's coming from, where they're expended at, can we expend it on the capital improvement project? The DPW is one of them. We have $8 million coming from the General Fund, and $8 million coming from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. I've made several things that we could possibly do different. And I was told they're unfeasible. I wanna know why they're unfeasible, not just that they're unfeasible. I wanna know what we can do different to make those capital improvements come about. The citizens weighed in on the police station, and everything got changed, and they found it with a two and a half and passed it. But it was the citizens' input that was the most important part. And it has to be the citizens' input down the road, because we are now at a $93 million budget. We're looking at, in the next couple of years, as it keeps rising, where are we going to keep finding the money? The state's cutting that. The federal government has to cut $1 trillion from the budget, or automatic cuts go through. So sitting on the Finance Committee, I'm gonna have to really look at this, and look at each thing, and find out if it's feasible to do this.
Capital improvements are extremely important. And every monetary expenditure requires a super majority of the city council, that's six out of nine councillors. And as I stated earlier, safe and useful infrastructure will lead to a better Northampton. And throughout my first term, I've applied budget scrutiny. I've examined our budgets to make sure that our spending matches our values and priorities. And various councillors vote on each and every capital expenditure. We need to do more. I was probably got the police station done last year despite the tough times. And there's still many, many, many millions of dollars worth of capital improvements needs. The best thing we can do, Jean, is continue to scrutinize these budgets. I know you do it, and all the councillors do it. And continue to listen to our constituents to make sure that our spending matches our values and priorities. I've done that in my first term. If you elect me, I'll continue to do that.
We have a capital planning process that I know is working towards trying to get 5% of our budget into capital investments for the community. And I think that's a critically important process, that we not only take a look at what our current needs are, but also what are our needs for the future. You know, you and I are driving on streets that our fathers, mothers, grandfathers, grandmothers paid for, and we have not invested in keeping them up. And because of that, repeatedly in the Board of Public Works, we hear concerns about the safety of the infrastructure, the road, the bridges, the sidewalks, the drainage systems, the flood control systems here in the city of Northampton. We are not investing adequately in them. The good news is that we have a capital improvement plan that's actually put together by a number of the leaders in the community, department heads, city councillors, who sit and make decisions about the requests that are put in front of them, about what are our priorities. And they hash through what are the things that should be at the top of the list. I'm pleased to report that in the next couple of years, we actually have $500,000 worth of money that's in the budget to help start repairing the roads that have actually been, in my mind, abandoned in terms of maintenance, simply because of budget issues over the last couple of years. These are critically important resources. They are our asset. They are our bank. They are what we live on every day. And we need to make sure that we're taking good care of them, maintaining them, rather than having to invest in rebuilding them when they become so destroyed, so worn out that they are beyond salvage.
Capital improvement is a misnomer. Not much of an improvement. When you have to replace a plowbed, that's repaired. And that's the, I mean, that's the level of what we're functioning at. And we're functioning at trying, we're not improving much. We're just trying to restore or maintain what we have in a working fashion. So you're absolutely right. Investing in that is critical. There's not an argument here at this table that I've been able to pick up. The fact is, as Mike said, how do you subsidize it? And I think that's, that was the gist of your question. I mean, where do you get the money from? And the money, basically, since we can't generate any more money because we're capped at 2.5% on taxes, and as I said, the revenues and fees and fines, those are limited as well. So we make tough decisions. And what we're asking, what you would be asking of us, any one of us who is fortunate enough to serve you, is that you're gonna have to trust in us, hopefully, that we have the ability to make the tougher decisions that we're gonna be facing. They will be tough decisions. There is not a lot of money coming there. If there is, and I leverage that, then I'll run for king of the world. But if, until such time, I will, I will serve as a councillor, try and figure out what our priorities are, negotiating with other councillors as we try to build consensus and figure out what's the best way, and what to allocate and prioritize money, and vote it to the best interests of the city.
I just have to agree with Bill. The big word is prioritize. We need to prioritize. We really need to look at how we're prioritizing, how the money's coming in, and how the money's going out. I totally agree with Bill. I'm prioritizing. I think that's what's missing at this point in time. I think it has to be stronger prioritizing.
Jesse.
I'm good.
Okay. Now, we will move toward your final comments. We have two minutes, and we'll start with Jesse.
I want to thank all the sponsors, and I want to thank all of you for taking part in your democracy. I believe in my first term that I've served you well as your at-large city councillor. I love this job, and I would like to continue serving. There are important issues that I would like to address in my next term. Drafting and adopting a new charter that will facilitate a more transparent, balanced, and effective government, addressing our ailing infrastructure, including our roads, public buildings, and sewers, because safe and useful infrastructure will lead to an even better Northampton. Continued advocacy for more school funding to maintain quality public education. These are some of the things I'd like to do if you reelect me. And I have a proven track record of delivering my promises. Public service is important, and it's a lot of work. And I'd like to thank Bill, MJ, and Mike for this spirited discussion. There are great candidates in this race. I want you to think about who of these new at-large candidates will best work with me. Because who paired with a new at-large councillor better than one with experience? It's been an honor to serve, and I'd love to be reelected. And I thank you for your vote.
Jesse. Okay. I'm really looking forward to this election. I do agree that you've got some, four good choices to make, and that how we distinguish ourselves from each other will be an interesting vote that we will witness on November 8. I want to share with you that what I think I bring is really a very broad and sophisticated background, first, having grown up here, understanding the background and the history of Northampton, and knowing it at a time when it was not at its best, watching it grow, flourish, become this robust, wonderful, livable community that I was happy to bring my family back here, to raise them here. I think that what I bring to you is a regional perspective, having worked as the region's economic development planner a number of years ago, and now as the executive director, planner of Valley Habitat, really working every day, making the values of the community come alive as we take the real values of the community, what's important to us, and make it very real in the community. I bring experience, having been, served on the Board of Public Works for the last couple of years. I actually have had a very substantial background in the solid waste management issue, having spent my one day in eighth grade opening up the recycling center at Locust Street, pounding glass in a 55-gallon barrel, all the way to my recent vote in support of the regional landfill, which I know is probably controversial in this room. But it was a, it was a decision that was based on long, thoughtful research and discussion with my peers on the Board of Public Works. And I look to step in the city council and to continue to have those long, thoughtful conversations that moves us to action. It's not enough just to discuss and deliberate. We really need to move into thoughtful, progressive, forward-thinking, collaborative action. And that's what I hope to bring to you on November 8, when you elect me as your city councillor at large.
We all watch with frustration under the inability of the federal government to function. Politics supplanting governance. And our national governance paralyzes at a time when we really need it the most, its failingest, and then we bear the consequences. Now, the global financial situation will improve or not. We'll see. It really doesn't have much to do with us right now. The fact is, the city of Northampton has to cope with the challenges that are presented, and we gotta cope with them now. We can't defer them. And we have to do it with integrity and hope. And we cannot afford to allow the process to be infected with the malaise that we're seeing nationally. I served as eight years as the councillor representing the citizens of Ward One. And there were many contentious issues that were negotiated then. And I found that as we called out the politics and the passions, and we focused on an agreed set of facts, we crafted good law and we made good decisions. I worry at this critical time, that we're not immune from the practice of political games infecting brave governance. And I worry that we run the risk of exploiting divisions instead of promoting hopeful visions. And I worry that Northampton will lose and forget the power of unity, and mutual effort, and succumb to fighting territorial battles that pit union against union, parent against parent, and neighbor against neighbor. And we can all agree on one thing. We cherish this place. We love this town, boards and all. And you know what? That's a very, very fortunate place to start, when we start our conversations. Preservation enhancement of our community must be our main objective. And we're gonna disagree as how best to achieve that and what success looks like. But we know that all of our goal is to do the very best for our city. I have the skills and the desire to serve with conviction and respect. And I want to serve the city again, always aware of the singular objective of keeping the city we share a rare and special place. I'd be honored to have your vote on November 8.
Again, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to be part of the democratic process. This election is about commitment and experience. I believe I have proven that I have the commitment, experience, and education to be an effective councillor at large, but would equally represent all citizens of Northampton. I've shown in the past few months that I'm not afraid to think and speak independently, and to challenge people to think outside the box to solve the city's problems. Former mayor has said, "Budget is the lifeblood of the city." Knowing this, I have attended every budget meeting, so that I will be able to make informed decisions on our city budgets. Have walked every ward in the city and talked to many residents who believe their input on crucial decisions are being ignored. Only one has, only to read the newspapers to watch council meetings, to know that the police officers, firefighters, and teachers, and the residents are unhappy and feel ignored. To be more informed on the important issues, I have attended many city meetings, including the joint school committee, city council meeting, and the Yes, Northampton informational meeting in May. Have not been silent on the need for teachers for the first grade level in all elementary schools, or the contracted step raises for teachers. I would like to leave here, I would like you to leave here tonight with one question. What do you want for representation from your councillor at large? I believe that by electing him on November 8, you will answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the first question.